Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Garradnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission. We had some technical hiccups. Our first go around for about 30 seconds, we were not able to communicate with those of you who are watching on Zoom. But I did note that today is the first time in about a year when we are back in our hearing room at 120 Broadway, which of course is the reason that I suspect we will see some technical glitches here and there throughout the course of our meeting today. So I ask everybody for their patience. We're welcoming a couple of commissioners here today. Gail Benjamin, who's going to join us in a minute, and I'm going to talk about her when she gets here. But I am going to welcome Anthony Crowell, who is somebody I've known for very long time. He's both a professor and the dean and president of New York Law School. His areas of expertise are state and local government law and civic engagement. At New York Law School, Anthony has worked to implement a curriculum and programs that advance social justice and economic opportunity for the people of New York City. And as part of this work, the school has focused on housing justice programs and was integral in getting the city's right to council law adopted. Prior to New York Law School, Anthony served as a senior policy advisor to Mayor Bloomberg, overseeing a portfolio aimed at enhancing New York City's competitiveness, accountability, and public integrity. Commissioner, would you like to say a few words before I introduce your co-colleague here, newcomer?
All this fancy technology. When I was in city government, there was hardly any fancy technology. It's a great honor to be here with you all today. I've been looking forward to getting started since the advice and consent hearing and formal appointment. As the chair said, I currently am the dean and president in New York Law School and bring with me not only 10 years of experience in that role, but 15 years in city service, in which I had a complex legal role as well as policy and management advisory role in City Hall that covered a broad range of issues, including land use. I started out my career actually in the City Law Department, working on economic development projects that related to eminent domain and real property tax issues as well. So I bring with me a great love for this city and a deep commitment to its people. And I look forward to doing my very best to contribute to responsible growth and making sure every New Yorker has a fair shot at their dream and aspiration.
We're very excited to have you. Welcome. Let me now turn to our other newcomer, who is hardly a newcomer, because Gail Benjamin has previously served in several highly visible land use roles in New York City, including as the chair of the New York City Charter Revision Commission in 2019 and as the longtime director of the New York City Council Land Use Division. At the City Council where she served for 25 years, Gail worked to get us to yes on many large and complicated projects, including Hudson Yards and many, many others. I say "get us" because she was my introduction to land use matters when I started in the City Council in early 2006. She was very patient with me, and I appreciated that very much. Commissioner Benjamin, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you so much, Chair Garradnik. It's a pleasure to be here. I hope that I'll be able to hear from everyone and make good decisions as we traverse the next phase of the city's both transition and recovery. I'm very pleased to be here. I'm very pleased to meet all of my fellow colleagues and commissioners, and I'm pleased to be able to be here and hear from all of you as to your opinions of the matters that come before us. Thank you very much, and I hope you'll be patient with me as I learn the ins and outs of being a commissioner.
Absolutely. Welcome again. We're very excited to be working with you. Okay, on to the business of the day. Due to the short agenda and the Monday holiday, we're going to be holding the review session, and then we're going to adjourn, and we're going to convene the special public meeting. At the special public meeting, we're going to vote on a handful of projects today. But before we get to the agenda, I want to underline a few important events that are worth noting. First, a huge congratulations to the commission, the Department of City Planning, the mayor, and the City Council for the council's preliminary approval of the Bruckner sites rezoning. This project, as you all know, is expected to bring approximately 350 new homes, many of them affordable to Throggs Neck in the Bronx. And it got a unanimous thumbs up from two City Council committees last week. And the full council is set to vote on the project Thursday. It's an important and symbolic project, and it's good for the Bronx and good for the city. In other news, the Department of City Planning tomorrow is going to share some information about a remote interactive public information session on the mayor's City of Yes text amendments. You will recall there are three of them coming down the pike. They will reach the commission first, then off to the City Council. First one is expected to be referred in the spring, that zoning for zero carbon. So we're going to be hosting the first of our public information sessions on Monday, October 17, from 7:00 to around 8:30 PM. It is intended to help the public better understand what these initiatives are all about and what they're intended to do. Zoning text is not necessarily the thing which normally commands a high level of public attention, but we're going to do our best to make it accessible to people and make it interesting and make sure people understand why it is being advanced. There'll be many more as we continue to engage with the public, because we really do want feedback, particularly at this early stage while those projects are being developed. Turning to the review session portion of the meeting today, the first item is the transfer of development rights from the Ambassador Theater in Manhattan's Theater District to a site a few blocks away designated for a hotel and retail. This transfer of air rights, as you will hear in a moment, includes a $2 million investment in the theater sub-district fund. And the second is a project that requires the renewal of a special permit that the CPC previously approved in 2018 on East 16th Street, east of Union Square in Manhattan. Currently, a parking garage, the renewal is of a permit which enables the transfer of development rights for a residential building as well as the physical improvement and maintenance of a city landmark. The commission will today finalize our communication to the Empire State Development Corporation on the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan, the proposal for Site 5. Then we were going to turn to the public meeting. In the public meeting portion of today's events, we're going to vote on four major housing proposals, all in Brooklyn. Together, these plans would bring approximately 3,000 new homes, about 2,680 of them affordable to New York City's most populous borough. They are 280 Bergen Street, Livonia 4, 1571 McDonald Avenue, and last but definitely not least Innovative Urban Village in East New York, which is an effort to create new housing, open space, and updated space for the Christian Cultural Center, which itself would bring more than 2,000 homes, all affordable, and some set aside for seniors to a neighborhood that needs it. It also will bring significant public open space, a 24-hour daycare, a vocational school, and a performing arts center. So with that by way of introduction, Ryan, let's get started on our agenda today.
Certainly. So welcome again to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Tuesday, October 11, 2022. The time is 1:15 PM, and a quorum is present in the room at 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is the City Planning Commission certification for a transfer of development rights in Manhattan Community District 5, and our presenter is Stephen Johnson.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by Ambassador Theater LLC and 7268 LLC for a commission certification to allow the transfer of 81,000 square feet of development rights from the Ambassador Theater, which is located in the theater district of the Special Midtown District of Manhattan. The requested action will permit the transfer of floor area from the Ambassador Theater to a receiving site at 748th Avenue. Both the granting and receiving sites are located within the theater sub-district in Manhattan Community District 5. With the requested action, the receiving site is anticipated to be redeveloped with a 640,000-square-foot hotel with retail. Now, the zoning resolution allows listed theaters in the theater sub-district to transfer their unused floor area to receiving sites throughout the theater sub-district, subject to a per-square-foot contribution into the theater sub-district fund. The commission may remember that they recently adjusted the contribution rate via the Citywide Administrative Procedure Act, or CAPA process, in June. This is the first application under this section that will be using the updated contribution rate of $24.65 per square foot. So the map on the right there depicts the theater sub-district and its two sub-areas. Generally, the sub-district is bounded by 8th Avenue to the west, 6th Avenue to the east, and 57th Street to the north, and 40th Street to the south. It includes the theater sub-district core sub-area, shown as gray on the map, which includes a cluster of the listed theaters. And an 8th Avenue corridor, shown in blue, which is more of a transitional zone in relation to the lower-density areas in the residential Clinton District to the west. The granting and receiving sites are highlighted in yellow, and both in the theater sub-district core and about four blocks away from each other. The requested action would result in approximately $2 million being deposited into the theater sub-district fund. Just give you some quick background on the fund and the theater sub-district council. So the theater sub-district council manages the fund, which comes from contributions related to the transfer of development rights from listed theaters. The theater sub-district council has eight members, including the mayor, council speaker, the Manhattan Borough President, the director of city planning, and four reps appointed by the mayor and council speaker. The original special theater district was created in 1967 as the first special district established by the zoning resolution, and it was created to preserve and protect the character of the area and the theatrical and entertainment uses. It then became a sub-district within the Special Midtown District in 1982, and that is when the zoning resolution listed the three dozen some theaters to protect them from demolition. In 1998, a text amendment established that a listed theater could transfer development rights throughout the entire sub-district in exchange for retaining, preserving, and maintaining a legitimate theater use and for a contribution to a newly-created theater sub-district fund. There have been 23 transfers since 1998. The contribution amount started at $10 per square foot in 1998, and now, as I mentioned, it's up to $24.65. And over the years, about $9 million in funding has gone to dozens of groups, including Rosie's Theater Kids, the Lark Play Development Center, and a variety of other theater companies. And also, there's been distribution of free and discounted tickets. And the last round of ground making was aimed at 11 nonprofit theater groups for initiatives to increase diversity and access to professional theatrical roles. And you can go on our website and get more detailed information on the fund and the council. So the Ambassador Theater was referred after filing to the community board, Borough President, and local council member for a 60-day review period, and is now being brought before the commission for review and approval. Manhattan Community Board 5 recommended approval of the application without conditions, and the Borough President recommended approval as well. The council member did not elect to comment on the application. So now I'll just touch on some of the project details. This slide shows the granting site, which is the Ambassador Theater outlined in black, and it says surrounding commercial area, it's high-density, commercial with a handful of mixed commercial residential developments. It's located a block between Broadway and 8th Avenue and West 49th and 50th Streets. It is located within the sub-district core. This is the receiving site. It's outlined in black. It's in the same general area in the core. It has frontage on 8th Avenue and is between 45th and 46th Streets. So here is a tax map showing the granting site, which is Lot 15 and is outlined in red. The Ambassador's Theater is owned by the Schubert Organization, who is the co-applicant for the application. Here we have the receiving site. It's a bit difficult to parse out the different lots, but the larger merged zoning lot includes Lot 1, 4, 9, 10, 11, and 57. Lot 2 and 3 are out parcels. The development site for the proposed hotel is only on the shaded black area, with not really coming off at black, but it's Lot 1. On Lot 10 and 11 are two listed theaters, the Music Box and Imperial Theater. Under the applicable zoning regulations, listed theaters cannot be counted towards the receiving site's lot area for the purposes of this zoning action. So the maximum permitted transferable floor area calculation is based upon the area in red, which is Lot 1, 4, 9, and 57. This slide shows the development site, which is outlined in yellow. It is currently occupied by a combination of vacant properties and surface parking. The developer of the receiving site is anticipated to be Extel, and this site will be redeveloped with an approximately 640,000-square-foot hotel with retail. Further details about the proposed development are unknown to us at this time. Here's the site plan for the receiving site and the merged zoning lot. The areas in the darker shaded gray constitute the receiving site, while the light gray depicts the two listed theaters, which are also part of the larger zoning lot. As I noted, the two listed theaters don't count towards the receiving site for purposes of calculating the transferable TDRs. However, I'd note that the two listed theaters, which are Schubert theaters, are contributing a combined 183,000 square feet of their unused floor area to the development site by having the merged zoning lot. As part of the application, the applicant will be making a contribution of $2,6,682.55 to the theater sub-district fund. This reflects the recent updated contribution rate, and that update resulted in an increase of about $575,000. So just to touch on the findings here, the first finding is that the granting site's available floor area for transfer is the base maximum FAR minus existing buildings and previous transfers. The Ambassador Theater has approximately 118,000 square feet available for transfer. Second finding is that each transfer reduces the amount of floor area on the granting site. The third finding is that the maximum floor area transferred cannot exceed 20% of the receiving site's base maximum floor area. The fourth finding is that there must be a continuation of a legitimate theater use and that it will be preserved in a state of good repair. And the final finding is that the appropriate funds are deposited from the transferred floor area. The department supports this application, and it meets the findings. If the requested action is approved, the theater sub-district fund will receive approximately $2 million of new funding, which will bring the theater sub-district fund to approximately 2.2 million. The action will also support one of the city's most important economic engines by ensuring the continued use and preservation of the theater. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll kick it off, and then, since this is our first time together, I think I'll just, if you have a question, you can just get my attention. I'll let you know that I've got you, and then I'll call on you in order. We recently changed the contribution rate for this theater sub-district. This is a $2 million contribution. What would it have been under the old standard before we had recently changed it?
So the increase was approximately $575,000. So is that $2 million, so, you know, 1,500 around there?
Yeah, it went from 17, what was it, 1746 or?
It was $17.60.
$17.60, yep. Okay. All right. So the standards here are pretty, you've got FAR to transfer, it irrevocably reduces the floor area, it's not more than 20% of the total basic for the receiving site, it's for required uses, and the dollars have actually been contributed. Are we actually certifying that the dollars have actually been contributed here?
No, they haven't been contributed yet, but that would be the next process. That's all the internal bureaucracy that we go through.
There are a couple of listed theaters on the receiving site. Are they also contributing floor area to this development?
Yeah, as standard for New York City, if a merged zoning lot, you can transfer your floor area around the zoning lot, so they merge with the larger site.
Okay. So the 640,000 square feet on the receiving site include air rights that are being transferred from the Ambassador Theater and also from the two theaters that are merged together within?
Right, and that's completely separate from what we're looking at.
We're not looking at that piece of this equation. We're only looking at the Ambassador Theater transfer. Okay, good. Other questions? Commissioner Cirulla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a question, perhaps a little bit of a spin-off from the chair's question about the contribution, and I know obviously we've seen this before, the process before, but I can't recall where the project details are not necessarily clear to us yet. So upon our action and the authorization of the transfer, does the payment to the theater, the payment to the fund, and the approval of the transfer occur regardless of whether or not the project happens? Or is there some linkage or contingency between this action and ultimately the approval of the development project, which I'm guessing just based on the fact that there's a hotel in it, we will be seeing it again, perhaps, if I remember correctly? So I just wonder how that all works? And do these development rights transfer to this site regardless of whether or not this project happens?
Well, the way it works is if there's a vote for approval, and then we have our lawyers get together, and the council reviews the legal documents to make the transfer and for the money to go into the appropriate account. So, I mean, I guess what you're asking, if we don't get the proper legal documents, then the transfer?
No, no, no. Okay. I'll just, I understand all of that as it relates directly to the action before us, and I'm assuming whatever has to occur for this action to be approved will occur. I'm connecting this action to the future development project that this action is coming to us to facilitate. And I'm wondering what happens, if anything at all, maybe that's, it happens, and now this additional FAR is on that site, and whether this developer continues through with its plan, or it gets modified, or it comes all the way through the land use process and is rejected, what happens?
So once the transfer happens and the funds would be deposited, then they have the floor area on that site?
Okay.
Stephen, if you can clarify the status of the hotel for this site as well, I think that might help the commissioner.
I mean, there could be other reasons they would have to come to us, but I'm assuming based on the hotel special permit that it may be that.
Sure. So the project, when City Planning was putting forth the hotel special permit project, City Council modified the project, and they included a specific site in the text that is this site. So that site was grandfathered into the text, so they do not have to come to City Planning to get a hotel special permit.
Understood. And despite my vote, I can't say I'm too disappointed about that, but that's another story. So, okay, but that's, it's helpful in knowing what the future is, so perhaps there's no reason to come back to us. But I just wondered, it's a good example to understand in any situation where there would be a subsequent city planning action.
If they wanted to get waivers, something else, they would have to come back like a regular development project.
But the transfer will be a done, is a done deal, regardless? Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Knuckles, and then Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair. Stephen, do you know the balance of the TDR within the theater district with this transfer? What would be the balance of TDRs?
I don't have the exact number. I have an idea what the number is, and I'm not sure if I should say it, because I'm not totally sure what it is, but there's quite a few leftover square foot.
Well, approximately.
Approximately a million.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to add to that, too, we don't track merged zoning lots. So if there's been some merged zoning lots going on, that would not be showing up on our data necessarily. So that's why it's also a bit difficult to pinpoint how much is available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. I had two questions. The first was of the 640 square feet for the hotel, how many, how much of that square footage is a result of the merged zoning lot? How much is a result of the action today? And how much was their original site FAR, or floor area, rather?
So the transfer is 81,000 square feet. We don't have the information on the other questions.
The merged zoning lot?
Yeah, we don't have the information. That wasn't a requirement for the action, but we could, if.
Yeah, if you have to, if the hotel is, what we know about the hotel is 640,000 square feet, we could probably, if we know the zoning, its zoning lot size, we could figure out how much they had by owning the site and how much they got elsewhere.
Sure, sure.
I'd appreciate that.
But also, there's questions about what the theaters, the Imperial and the Music Box Theater, might be retaining. So for example, the Ambassador didn't transfer all of their floor area. They kept some. The Imperial could be keeping some to develop something or transfer to somebody else, you know? So there's elements that we might not have the details, but we can probably get, we can get a ballpark.
Ballpark would be good, just to know how much more mass they have accrued from these transfers than they had originally. And my second question was, I'm assuming there's a restrictive declaration that talks about what they're doing to enhance the theater use?
Yes.
And what are they doing to enhance the theater use, other than the fund, which we know about?
So the first thing they do, well, I don't know if it's the first thing, but they have to continue operation as a legitimate theater.
Right, and that's in a restrictive declaration, I take it.
Then they have a report that lists the state of condition and what needs to be upgraded and what needs to be repaired. So that's outlined in the report that they put together. And the details are outlined on, so for example, if they need a new facade or if something's not maintained, that would be outlined in the report. And those reports are required for the chair to review those reports. But we can get you a copy of that, too.
Yeah, I'm just curious about how much real preservation of the use is entailed in these transfers?
So, I mean, it's.
I mean, the Ambassador is clearly a legitimate theater.
It's operating legitimate theater, so it has to be able to have people come in and see a performance. So, and then all the other legal documents, you have to maintain it in good repair and make sure it stays that way for a minimum number of years.
In good repair or in landmark-approved good repair, just out of?
Well, if it's an interior, I mean, if the interior's a landmark, so there's extra requirements for what they have to do from LPC, so.
And all of that is in the restrictive deck that council will work on?
And the engineer's report that surveyed the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we are now going to move to a voice vote, which will send an approval letter to the Buildings Department saying that these findings have been met officially. So I am now going to seek assent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department to enable the transfer of the development rights from the Ambassador Theater here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ayes have it. We will move on. Thank you all. Thank you, Stephen. Ryan, what's next?
So the second item on our agenda is a renewal of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District 5, and presenting to the commission for the first time is Joanie Clark.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by East 16th Street owner LLC for the first renewal of two special permits that were previously approved in 2018. The special permits were granted with a four-year term that would lapse if substantial construction has not been completed on the development site, but the permits can be renewed for two additional three-year terms for a total of 10 years. The renewal of the special permits is pursuant to Section 1143. There is one finding for the commission to consider for this application, and that is the commission shall find that the facts upon which the special permits were granted are. and that is, the commission shall find that the facts upon which the special permits were granted have not substantially changed. In this case, the applicant is proposing no changes to the project, and it remains as originally considered by the CPC. The department also reviewed the renewal application and agrees that there are no changes to the application. The development site is located on East 16th Street between Irving Place and Union Square East in a C6-2A zoning district and is currently occupied by a standalone parking garage, which contains 196 spaces. The first special permit is a Section 74-711 Landmark Preservation Special Permit, which allowed the applicant to modify height, setback, side yard regulations, and the minimum distance between buildings. In conjunction with the special permit, a continuing maintenance program was established for the Landmarked Century Association Building, which is located at 109 East 15th Street, which is on the same lot as the development site. The Landmark Preservation Commission designated this building as an individual landmark on January 5, 1993. The second special permit is to allow 18 accessory parking spaces within the building. As of right, the development was permitted parking spaces for no more than 20% of the total number of dwelling units, which in this case is eight to 11 parking spaces. Without the proposed first renewal action, the project would expire after four years on October 31, 2022. If approved, the renewal would extend the special permits for three years until October 31, 2025. This area map shows the development site outlined in red and the project area outlined in light blue. The project area is comprised of three tax lots with 100 feet of frontage on East 15th Street and 64 feet of frontage on East 16th Street. The zoning lot includes the development site, which is the existing garage, the landmark building, and the Lee Strasberg Theater and Film Institute. The area has a very mixed-use character. Union Square Park is to the west of the project area, and the 350-foot-tall Zechendorf Towers are across 15th Street in the mixed-use orange color. Also nearby is the Department of Education's Washington Irving Educational Campus, which includes five high schools in the light-blue public facilities color on Irving Place and 16th Street, as well as the landmarked 26-story Con Edison Building in the light-purple utility color. This is a close-up of the merged zoning lot and three tax lots and three buildings with the proposed development outlined in a dashed red line. Here is an aerial photo showing you some additional context of the neighborhood. Here is the development site from East 16th Street. Currently, there is a nine-story, 86-foot-tall public parking garage, which contains 196 spaces. This existing structure is to be demolished to facilitate the construction of their proposed development. Another view of East 16th Street facing northwest with the development site on the left of the image with the park sign attached to the frontage. Union Square Park is in the distance. This is the project area from East 15th Street. To the left is the landmark building, which is the former Century Association Building, outlined in yellow. To the right of the photo is the Lee Strasberg Theater and Film Institute, outlined in red. The continuing maintenance plan is associated with the landmark building. And in addition to that plan, your briefing package includes a detail of some of the restoration work for that building. In conjunction with the proposed development, the landmark building would have restoration work and repairs, and this slide outlines a list of some of those improvements. In addition, a continuing maintenance plan would be established for the landmark. This is an illustration of the proposed development in the context of the neighborhood. The two towers on either side of the development are the Zechendorf Towers, which are across 15th Street. The proposed development is a 283-foot, 21-story, mixed-use residential building, which contains 40 to 55 residential units, commercial and community facility space, and up to 18 accessory parking spaces. The requested and approved waivers for the building include height, base height, and setback. The C6-2A zoning district requires a maximum base height of 85 feet and a 15-foot setback from the street line on narrow streets with a total maximum building height of 120 feet. The proposed development will have a base height of 283 feet and a series of setbacks beginning at the 19th floor. The applicant also requests a waiver for the side yard. Although no side yards are required in this zoning district, the zoning resolution requires any open area provided along a side lot line to be at least eight feet wide. Since the proposed development will be built to the lot line and rise to a height of 230 feet and then begin a series of setbacks that will be less than eight feet, the applicant is requesting a waiver for the side yards. The parking facility will be located within the proposed development and will include 18 accessory parking spaces. In the Manhattan Core, residential developments in community districts 1 through 6 are permitted a maximum number of accessory parking spaces at no more than 20% of the total number of dwelling units. In this case, on an as-of-right basis, the applicant is permitted eight to 11 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 18 accessory parking spaces. This illustration shows the proposed curb cut on 16th Street and the automated parking facility vestibule. The development site is in dark gray. The parking spaces are all located below grade. On July 14, Community Board Five's resolution recommended denial of both permits by a vote of 22 to 12 with one abstention, as they believed that there has been no change or new information that would alter their previous stance from 2018. The vote in 2018's resolution was a disapproval of 36 to 1 with two abstentions. A few of the issues Community Board Five mentioned in their recent resolution include that the project alters the character of the block, the project should have included mandatory inclusionary housing, and that no formal commitment to off-site affordable housing has been completed where the applicant team was working with Councilmember Rivera. Included in your briefing package is a letter from the applicant where they respond to the Community Board's resolution and note that they have committed to contributing $2 million to the Lower East Side Coalition Housing Development and $500,000 to Asian Americans for Equality, which will be made upon the issuance of a new building permit on the development site. In summary, the applicant is seeking their first renewal of two special permits that were approved on October 31, 2018. The commission can renew the special permits for a three-year term if they find that the facts upon which the special permit was granted have not substantially changed. The department reviewed the application, and there are no proposed changes to the application. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Joanie. And first of all, let me say congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Bravo, bravo. You did it like a veteran, so congrats. Okay, so let me just jump into a couple of questions, and I know that there will be others here. The standard for renewal of the authorization of a special permit is that the facts upon which the special permit were initially granted have not changed. When we say the facts, are we talking about the structure of the proposed development? Are we talking about the neighborhood context? Are we talking about the way we view parking? What are we talking about when we say the facts have not changed?
I'm not exactly sure of the answer to that question, but I can definitely get back to you with that.
So, yeah, hello, everyone. What has to change is the development itself. So, for example, if they came back and said, well, we decided we want to go 10 feet higher or 10 feet out or change the setback, that changes the waivers, changes the whole project to us. And the word substantially changed means it has to be something that's substantial enough that would mark it to be a modification if needed by the developer. Thank you. I see Susan meandering to the podium. That means there's additional context. Go ahead, Susan.
I was just going to add one little thing, is that whatever the commission originally considered when issuing the special permit, if something has changed with respect to those initial considerations, the commission now can take that into account. And so the idea is that if a permit is granted, it should generally be renewed unless the project has changed or the grounds for the permit have changed in some way. And that's what this commission can look at from what was done before.
Okay, so from what I understand from the presentation, the project has not changed, correct?
That's right. That's correct.
And then let's just talk about the grounds on which the commission based its initial approval. Because I wasn't here, and also, some of present company were, but many were not. Can you talk a little bit about the grounds on which the commission stated for its initial approval? Yeah, so the project, the City Planning Commission reviewed the project and said it was in context with the built environment on 16th Street. So the context, so that's why we noted the Zechendorf Towers and the development in the area, because one of the waivers was to grant it a height waiver and a setback waiver, so there are sheer walls. So the commission discussed that and felt that was acceptable. Another thing that was discussed was the car parking special permit. That was discussed, and I think there was some interesting discussion about the number of vehicles. I think there was discussion because it's taking on the site of a garage parking lot, facility. So there's 200 parking spaces on the site, and, you know, garages are excellent development sites. So they're building on that, and they wanted to have a few extra parking spaces to have their automated facility. But it would seem that they met the findings for that also. But I would note that the City Council made a modification. They originally asked for a few more parking spaces, just a few more. And I think it was 21, and then the City Council modified that down to 18. Okay, thank you. And how about MIH? There's no MIH here. Why is that? So this is a merged zoning lot. So like, when we discussed the Ambassador Theater, when you have different zoning lots and they merge together and make one zoning lot, you can transfer your floor area around. So we're not creating, we're not upzoning the area. There was no map amendment or text amendment. And, you know, it was just using the typical merged zoning lots to acquire the floor area, which preserves the landmark theater at its height, and it preserves the Lee Strasberg Building at its height. That's kind of the concept behind having merged zoning lots is that, you know, you might get a taller building, but that takes away the floor area for the other buildings. So they're staying at four feet tall. Great, thank you. Questions?
When this special permit was originally granted, was there conversation around the number of units for a building of this size?
Is that because they're saying 40 to 55 units?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sometimes developers don't know the programming for the project. So they're saying 40.
Is that still the case?
That's the case for them. And they're like, it could be as many as 55 and as few as 40, depending on the size. And I think that's also tied to why they're coming back. They said that they're coming back for the renewal because of the pandemic and they couldn't get the development going. So I think they're trying to see what the market's going to be and whether to have more units or fewer, bigger units, that type of situation.
Seems, I mean, a little strange that there's no more information about the programming at this point.
It's a residential building. Other questions?
I know it was mentioned, but I quickly missed this part. And how many out of the 40 to 50, or 41 to 55 will be affordable?
So this is completely market rate?
Oh, great. Well, no wonder I missed it.
You might have heard Joanie talk about the contribution to AFFI and the other housing coalition. That was made later, at a later stage after approval by the commission.
So, well, no, I've answered my own question because it hadn't been constructed.
Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, so this, I will remind the commission, is a renewal based on facts not changing. So that is the dynamic that we are in. And what we are asked to do here is to send a comment letter, an approval letter to the Buildings Department, noting that those circumstances have not changed. So unless there are further questions, I'm going to move on to that vote. Seeing none, I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote to send the approval letter to the Department of Buildings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries, and we will proceed with that approval letter to the Department of Buildings. Thank you again, Joanie. And let us move on, Ryan, to our next item, which I believe is the World Trade Center.
That's right. The third item on our agenda is a review of a general project plan in Manhattan Community District One, and Jasmine DePaul is here to present.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners, and welcome to the new Commissioners, too. So this is going to be a follow-up presentation to our last conversation on September 19. It's related to the proposed Phase Two Amendment to the World Trade Center General Project Plan, or GPP. This involves one particular site known as Site Five. On the screen is a rendering of the World Trade Center campus, and Site Five is outlined in the yellow. Phase One of the project was approved by the City Planning Commission earlier in the year on February 14, 2022. The New York State Urban Development Corporation Act requires that any GPP that overrides local regulations be referred to the City Planning Commission, who can then recommend approval, disapproval, or modifications to the GPP. ESD held a public hearing on Site Five on September 15, 2022. The public comment period will end on October 17, 2022. Included in your briefing package is a draft of a CPC recommendation letter. So to quickly recap, the Lower Manhattan Development Corporation, known as LMDC, and the Empire State Development, known as ESD, is proposing a second phase of modifications to the World Trade Center GPP, Site Five, that will focus on various zoning overrides, including FAR, height, curb cuts, and pedestrian circulation space, as well as the site and building design. These modifications will facilitate the creation of an approximately 940-foot-tall, 1.3-million-square-foot mixed-use building. To the left of the screen is a map of the World Trade Center campus with Site Five located to the south end of the campus, towards the bottom of the screen. Here is a map showing the immediate surrounding area around Site Five. Site Five borders three streets with Greenwich Street to the east, Albany Street to the south, and Washington Street to the west. And we also have Liberty Park directly north. So the draft of the CPC letter outlines the overall support for the World Trade Center GPP program and for Site Five's building mass and bulk, as well as some of the zoning overrides in their proposal. It's also supportive of the inclusion of affordable housing on the site and encourages ESD to further explore ways to maximize the amount of permanently affordable units. The letter also outlines the issues that were discussed with the commission. The letter also outlines the issues that were discussed with the commission at the previous review session. They include the driveway, the curb cut, the pedestrian circulation space, and the second-floor public passageway that connects to a third-floor community facility space. So the first issue I'll summarize is the driveway and curb cuts. Um, I know some of the commissioners weren't at our previous discussion, so I just want to quickly note when I talk about the curb cuts here. Um, E S D is proposing um a waiver of the curb cut regulations in the Lower Manhattan Special District, which means that on Greenwich Street, which is to the uh right, they are not allowed a curb cut there as of right, I mean, um, as per the zoning resolution. Um, however, they are requesting a curb cut for Greenwich Street. So I'll, I'll discuss our comments and I just wanted to set up that background. Um, so our letter urges E S D to reconsider the private vehicular driveway and associated curb cuts on both Greenwich Street and Washington Street that provide exclusive access for residents of the building. While we appreciate that justers have been made in response to D C P comments on the driveway by adding a second sidewalk adjacent to Liberty Park, we continue to question the need for this exclusive vehicular drop-off area in the heart of New, one of New York City's most transit-rich areas. The letter states that the commission believes that the removal of the driveway would not only provide for a safer and more welcoming space for all users, but allow for opportunities to increase the amount and quality of public spaces around the building. So the second issue the department outlined in the, is the pedestrian circulation space. The letter encourages E S D to greatly increase the amount of pedestrian circulation space, which is shown here in the dark blue, to support a better pedestrian experience. The proposed waiver of pedestrian circulation space requirements would result in a 77% reduction of the required pedestrian circulation space. So E S D is proposing 1,055 square feet of pedestrian circulation space. Um, the zoning resolution would require them 4,638 square feet of pedestrian circulation space. We appreciate that the proposed pedestrian circulation space along Greenwich Street and some of Albany Street would widen the, widen portions of the sidewalk by three feet. However, a more significant pedestrian circulation space that meets the zoning resolution requirement would provide an opportunity to create quality public spaces that would serve the residents of the proposed development, the broader community, visitors, and workers. The last issue we previously discussed was a second-floor passageway. The letter states that the elevated public spaces present unique challenges in being readily identifiable as public in nature and provides insufficient reason for the public to leave the ground floor to access these spaces. The department encouraged E S D to enhance and modify the design of the passageway to create a welcoming experience by adding amenities like benches, movable tables and chairs, as well as programming and wayfinding to encourage the public use. The letter urges E S D to continue to improve on their current design to add elements to the public passage that will encourage the public to use and engage with the space. The letter notes that the elimination of the private driveway would also provide opportunities to reimagine the interface between the building and Liberty Park. The enhancement of the second-floor passageway would ensure a stronger visual connection with Liberty Park and expand options in creating a welcoming and well-used public space. So in summary, the department recommends its support and approval for most of the zoning overrides and the proposed building and site design. However, the department strongly recommends modifying the World Trade Center GPP Phase Two to exclude the waiver of the pedestrian circulation space and the curb cut regulations, as well as redesigning the ground floor to prioritize the pedestrian experience through the addition of well-designed public spaces. The department notes that there is an existing temporary plaza at Site Five known as Albany Street Plaza, which opened for the public in 2014. Once construction begins on Site Five, the Albany Street Plaza will be removed. We recognize that the Albany Street Plaza was a temporary measure to activate the area as World Trade Center development plans were being established. However, in light of the removal of the temporary public plaza, the proposed significant reduction in required pedestrian circulation space and the use of the ground floor area as a private driveway is particularly concerning. The commission urges, sorry, we urge, we encourage E S D to continue to work together with the state, the city, the local community groups, and other stakeholders during the public comment period to incorporate their comments um for Phase Two of the proposed amendments into the final design. And we continue to look forward to E S D's continued refinement and progress on the final proposal. And that's the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you Jasmine. Um, and uh we'll go to questions and comments in a moment. I just will remind the commission that uh in the last time we were reviewing this, it was a question of the change of use uh to allow for residential development on this site, with a promise that the, that E S D would come back to this commission for the purpose of taking a look at the details of the design and configuration of the plan. Um, and we were clear in our last communication that we believe that this was a site that was appropriate um and a good opportunity for housing. Uh, and we encourage the state to go as far as they plausibly can to ensure long-term affordability um for the units in this building. Uh, but we also noted, and certainly the presentation that we see today, I think really uh puts it to the fore, uh the concerns about the limits to public access here uh to the public space adjacent to Liberty Park, proximity to the September 11th Memorial. Um, and unfortunately, this project as it currently is configured prioritizes cars over pedestrians um in one of the most walkable areas of New York City. Um, the project produ, proposes that 77% reduction in the public circulation space that would normally be required um on a site like this. Uh, and open space is at a premium here in the Financial District and uh the inclusion of a driveway, a private driveway, um, it is occupying space that would better be provided to the public as valuable public space in this dense and vibrant downtown area. So that is all reflected in the draft letter that you all have from the department. Um, to me, this is a, this is an important issue for this, this site and certainly potential um significant missed opportunity uh for the public um if it proceeds as currently designed. So um with that, I will just uh stop, uh stop talking there, but see if there are other thoughts and comments from the commission. Commissioner Cirillo?
Thank you so much. Um, so in, in looking at the, the draft letter and I, I think the sort of we've rationally connected suggestions about the driveway and potentially the elimination of the driveway to improve the public spaces better, which obviously makes a lot of sense and I think is a good recommendation, um, even though I'm not completely against people having cars, but I do understand the rationale and the situation and makes sense. Um, the, the issue of the second-floor sort of passageway, I'm not sure it's clear as to what we're really, it, it sounds like we obviously don't love the idea and I know a, you know, uh, non-ground level passageways are, as the letter indicates, a unique challenge and don't necess, doesn't necessarily provide for ease of the public's access to it or a reason to, to potentially use it. But then, we, we're not really saying that. We're really saying we know it's a challenge and here's the ways to make it better. So are, is, is that what we want to suggest, the improvement? How to improve the design and the access to it? Or are we saying we really don't like this idea at all and would rather this not be part of the design and we should come up with another way to access the park and whatever else you would access from that passageway?
I think it depends on the route that they're going to take. If they're really, I think the reason we gave them kind of the way that we worded it was because uh they're more than likely going to keep that second-floor public passage. So we'd want them to try to create as much as possible a better experience on that second floor. So, you know, we recommend, um, instead of them thinking of it as like people just traveling through to get to a destination, creating that second floor as a destination for them to actually want to engage in, in a space.
Okay, okay. I, I, I understand that. I mean, I think that's the message. So then I think it's articulated accurately in the letter. I just wasn't sure exactly the message we wanted to send with it. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you and thank you so much for the presentation. I just wanna um just voice my really strong support for the wording in the, the letter about the, the private driveway, which seems so totally excessive. Um, to me, regardless of whether or not I love cars um or don't, um, just interrupts the neighborhood so completely and creates a kind of even further expansion of exclusivity. Um, and I feel the same way about the second-level passageway, that it's just not, you know, I think about myself, like, would I feel like, oh, I'm going to go up there? No, it doesn't feel like um something that is with a big sign on it that says, "Public, please come and enjoy." Um, it feels like, "Public, please look, look in." Um, so I just wanna to, to state that. And I'm curious, and I don't think it was in the last conversation we had, although I could be wrong, the, the engagement with community groups, um, just if it's available, would love to know who and when that engagement? Like who, who with and what, what was it?
Yeah, as part of the GPP process, um, E S D was required to create, um, I don't know the specific term, but basically um create like a, a task force with all the local community groups um here in New York. So they were required to engage with the community groups, which included like Community District One, Community Board One, um, and other like local community groups. Um, I don't know the, um, the amount of times they were engaged with or to what extent, but that, that was part of their community engagement. You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. I had a couple, two quick questions. One is, um, just building on the last question. I wanted to know if that group produced any written recommendations? Anything that we can actually reference in the letter to make that last point a little stronger? Or whether we can suggest following or reflecting those recommendations in any of the points that we make, which I think are very, really good? That's my first question. Uh, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Sure, to your first question, um, they have not come out with written recommendations. Um, their public comment period is ongoing right now, so I'm sure they will, they will get written recommendations. Um, but we don't have access to that specific group's recommendations just yet. However, I will note, I, I am in close contact with Community Board One. Um, and they have also told me and expressed to me that they um would like to see more public space and expansion of that second floor and even an expansion of the community facility space.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I think that that would be really, really useful, I think, to partner up with the community board and, and, and acknowledge their voice through our letter. Uh, I, I also had another question, which was, and this is more of a, I think a clarification question regarding what, what the commission can do. Uh, can the language uh change a little bit from urging or recommending to suggesting that we would recommend approval or disapproval, provided that some things are met?
So the short answer is, um, we, we get a one crack at our ability to communicate here. So we want to do it clearly and make the points that we want to make. Um, so we have phrased it as we generally support the concept of high-density residential development on this site with maximum affordable housing here as plausible. Um, but we also urge you to, you know, to review the following and to modify accordingly. Um, so, and I think that probably is the, that probably is the, the clearest and best way to communicate it to the state. But, you know, there, only because we won't get another chance to come back and say, well, we will therefore change our view if. That's the only reason why I think that we wouldn't do that here. But otherwise, I think that's a, I think that's a, would be a very rational suggestion. And to your point about acknowledging, you know, community voice, and we can find a, a way to add a, a, you know, a reference to that in here, uh, that we're, you know, we're, we, we agree with some of the voices um that have expressed these, these sorts of views in the community. I think that's a good, good edit. If you're willing to deputize me and the department to actually make that small edit and allow us to proceed today, that I think that would be a good, a good edit.
Can I, uh, just following up on that though? I mean, in essence, as, as much as we all may agree that we want to encourage the prioritization of the public experience versus the private and pedestrian over um the car use, without stronger language like that, are we essentially saying, "Project, we're okay with the project with those things included?"
You know, the letter, the letter says what the letter says. And I think that, you know, we tried to walk a line between we support the high-density residential, which of course we've done already, and to lay out these specific proposed amendments to the design.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, they, we probably could have written things in different, in different ways. But I, you know, this is the normal way in which we would communicate our views to E S D for their consideration, but.
Well, I guess I, I echo the sentiment in the letter around um all these issues. I think as strong as we can make the language, the better. And I also appreciated the inclusion of the language around the distribution of affordable units. I think that's a really important feature as well to emphasize, um, given it's a state project um and not one that has to abide by um certain provisions in M I H or other places that, that regulate distribution. So, that too, as strong as we can make that language, the better.
Okay, that's a, that's a good note. Thank you. Uh, and by the way, we, we will take what I will suggest here is that we'll take the comments from this commission and if you are, it sounds like these are strengthen a little, add a couple. And if you're willing to allow me to do that, then we can proceed today. But I think that those are all within the bounds of things that we can accomplish based on the commentary that, that you all are, are offering here. Commissioner?
Yeah, just a, just a question as, as a newcomer. Are there jurisdictional or governance considerations why the language is the way it is?
You want to do that one, Susan? We're going to invite Susan Amra on the General Counsel to answer that.
Um, so we, the commission basically, and the statute allows us to approve, modify, or disapprove. Um, and really, um, once we, so those are really the three options. And what the letter is essentially saying, we approve the plan in all these respects, but we ask you to modify it in these respects. Um, and then once we do that, um, the, the, the E S D board is going to have to vote on, on this. Um, if we disapprove or we um ask for modify, they, they need to, um, you know, they will presumably give very serious consideration to um our request. Um, they, they can still decide to adopt the plan as they would, um, as it is written. Um, but they will give very serious cons, uh, consideration to our request. If we ask that they modify something, in order for them to approve it, they would need to approve it by two-thirds vote. Um, generally, they would need to approve something by a majority vote. Um, and with the E S D board, that's, you know, generally they approve things by more than two-thirds vote.
That's very helpful. That's where my recollection was from some time ago.
Right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay, so with Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay, so with those, uh, uh, edits as, uh, recommended, uh, by Commissioners Osorio and Bozorg, um, I, uh, I think we are, we're ready to proceed with this, uh, letter to ESD. So, what I'm gonna do now is do another ascent with a voice vote, uh, to send this comment letter as slightly edited, and we will circulate it around to you all so you can see the final, um, to, uh, the Empire State Development Corporation. So, that's what's about to happen. And now we're gonna do it. So, I would like to seek assent by a voice vote, uh, to send this comment letter, uh, to the Empire State Development Corporation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Um, I'm not a nay, but I'll abstain. I just, I, I have a lot of questions, um, and so I'm not a full yes, but I'm also not a full no, so figure it out.
Okay, abstention from Commissioner Goodrich. If you have, if, if you wanna pose any questions, you can pose them now.
There are a lot, so.
Okay, you can also pose them after if you wish. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Ryan?
Certainly. Uh, so the fourth item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification to the forty twenty-five Crescent Street rezoning in Queens Community District One. The city council proposes to modify the mandatory inclusionary housing option, eliminating option two, and adding the deep affordability option. Staff believe that this modification is within scope.
Questions? This is, uh, not our first scope determination. Um, uh, are there, uh, any questions, comments? Seeing none?
Yes.
Yes, there is one. Commissioner Goodrich, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So eliminate, so what is the end result if the deep affordability is eliminated?
Uh, no, deep, deep affordability is, is added.
Oh, it's added?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, uh, we're going to, this is another ascent by voice vote to tell the council that, uh, the modifications here are within the scope of the environmental review, so let's do it. May I have a sent by a voice vote, uh, to send a letter to the council that these modifications are within scope? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Guys have it. Thanks, Ryan.
And the fifth item on our agenda is a scope determination, uh, for a city council modification to twenty eighty McDonald Avenue in Brooklyn, Community District Eleven. Uh, San Matinaak is here to, to discuss.
Yeah.
I believe we have a presentation on this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a real short one?
Yeah, so, sorry, I thought you did earlier so briefly, maybe you were planning to do the same way, so I was thinking, okay.
Oh, no, you, you're gonna do it, yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
This is a private application by the Jackson Group for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a eight-story mixed-use building containing sixty-six dwelling units, including twenty-two MIH units. Next, please. The project area is located in Community District Eleven in Gravesend Neighborhood in Brooklyn. On October sixth, the Land Use Committee of City Council recommended a modification and have filed the proposed modification with Commission for Scope Determination. The modification involves a reduction in proposed project area boundary to exclude two lots to the south of Avenue S. Next, please. So, this map shows the previous proposed project area, and the modification is to exclude lots, two lots, which are to the south of Avenue S. Next, please. This map shows the modified project area. The commission is asked to determine whether the proposed modification is in scope, and yes, this is in scope.
Thank you. San Mati, what will be the, what's the impact here of reducing, uh, this site, um, to be only the north side of Avenue S here?
So, the, uh, currently, the two lots which are excluded, one is a utility site, uh, uh, Brooklyn Gas Company, and the other one is a community facility used owned by Cerebral Palsy. They own offices there. So, uh, under the proposed zoning, they would have the ability to expand the community facility use and expand their users. So, uh, with this exclusion, they are limited in scope for their, uh, expansion.
So, this is the, the not-for-profit organization for, is it United Cerebral Palsy?
That's right.
Which owns a site south of Avenue S?
Right.
Which as a result of this action would not have the opportunity to, uh, expand its own community facility?
That's right.
Okay, I'll just let that sit there for a sec. Other questions, comments?
Do we know why this modification is being requested?
Our understanding is for the reason just, uh, mentioned. That's the latest. We just got this information an hour ago.
There's no problem with it creating a spot zone or a zone that might look like a spot zone, is there?
So, we, we did consider that. However, it's not completely unusual for, uh, rezoning areas to be similar to this project area. In the past, we have had such applications.
And, and we, we talk, we talk a lot about this, and what, what our, our take is, is that there is, there are stronger land use rationales and weaker land use rationales. And when we certify something in the department, we, in, in the case of the original application, we felt that that was the strongest land use rationale that we could sort of get out of a single application. Would we say that this is a weaker land use rationale? Probably. Is it a spot zoning? That would be something that a, a court would have to decide.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, please do, finish my sentence.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Makes me feel smart.
Other, other questions, comments? Okay, well, we're here for scope determination, so I'm going to seek assent, uh, by a voice vote to send a letter to the council that the modifications are within scopes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Okay, thank you. That passes.
Uh, so, for future votes, uh, staff have prepared reports for consideration later today on, uh, two eighty Bergen Street rezoning, and, um, Rifa Mahesh is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I believe there's a slide. I'll just wait for a moment till it gets pulled up.
Get the slide up here.
Thank you. The department supports the proposed medium-density R seven A residential district with MIH. The project site is in close proximity to Third Avenue, an important north-south corridor connecting the recently rezoned Gowanus Neighborhood with downtown Brooklyn, New York City's third-largest central business district, and is roughly five blocks from the Atlantic Terminal Regional Rail Hub. The proposed actions will support the redevelopment of the project site, which is presently improved with a one-to-two-story building into ne, nearly three hundred new homes, including up to ninety permanently income-restricted and rent-stabilized homes. However, the department urges the applicant team to be responsive to comments raised during Euclid, including regarding teneting the ground-floor uses to Gowanus-based businesses, and stronger commitments to utilizing green strategies, such as the use of solar, green roofs, and energy-efficient features. The department recommends approval of the two eighty Bergen Street application. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, and I, I just wanted to note, uh, a couple suggestions that I have discussed with, uh, the staff in terms of the language of the report, which build on what you just said, uh, but, uh, I think should hone in a little bit on a couple different things. One specific, uh, suggestion is to, when, when referencing the median household income in the area, you know, we're referencing, uh, median household income that is for the entire area, um, but it's raised blind. And I think that in the report, we can specify how that median household income changes for African-Americans and Hispanics, that is half of what we know in the report. And I think that this will be important alongside, kinda like the discussion regarding deep affordability or the need for deep affordability and the limitations that the applicant has, uh, e, expressed in this regard. That's, that's one. Then the other one, I think, has to do with, I think, more explicit language regarding, uh, the implementation of local laws nineteen oh, nineteen twenty, nineteen forty, which, you know, certainly, uh, will sort of be down the line, but I think require a more clear commitment from the, the applicant in this regard, which seems to be, again, sort of like in synchrony with, with the language that you have drafted, but, but I think could, could, could make it a little stronger. And there was, uh, one last, um, one last question, or suggestion, I guess, which is that, um, again, in, in agreement with the, eh, applicant's, uh, decision to apply for, uh, waiver to the parking permit, I think that the, our report should, uh, reference, what are the public benefits that could rather be created here to reinvest the resources that the applicant is gonna save if they don't have to build the parking lots that they're required? And I think that this could go a long way in terms of some of the provisions that the borough president has requested or suggested or recommended in terms of addressing the needs of the local community. So, I think that, again, these are just suggestions, but I think could make our, our language much stronger. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for those comments, Commissioner, and we're happy to make the edits to the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Amira. Okay.
Okay. Uh, we all, the staff have also prepared a report for fifteen seventy-one McDonald Avenue rezoning, and Josh Vogel is here to discuss. Josh?
Thanks, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The department supports this application, which would facilitate the development of a le, an eleven-story mixed-use building with a hundred-six units, of which thirty-seven would be permanently affordable, and ground-floor commercial space in the Midwood Neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District Twelve. Change in zoning districts allow for growth along a major neighborhood corridor that is a hundred feet wide and is well-served by public transit. McDonald Avenue has been identified as a potential corridor for increased housing opportunities as far back as two thousand, two, two thousand and seven's Plan Y C. The current zoning has been in place since nineteen sixty-one and does not provide opportunities for growth. Furthermore, the C four four L district is specifically designated for transit corridors and encourages a non-residential base, lifting and pulling the housing back from subway tracks. It also requires a five-foot setback, widening the sidewalk adjacent to the elevated, which enlivenes the pedestrian experience along McDonald Avenue. The zoning text amendment will ensure that future developments in the project area will provide permanently affordable housing, which is sorely needed in this community district, which is rapidly increasing in population while producing some of the lowest levels of housing units in the borough over the past decade. Additionally, the department concurs with statements made by Commissioners and the Borough President that parking beyond what is required is inappropriate, given the close proximity to the subway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's move on to the next one.
Certainly. Uh, so, in La, La, La Bonia Four, uh, project, Juki Sai is here also with this statement.
Believe we have a slide for that, Ryan?
Yeah, we do have a slide.
All right, got it.
It takes a bit to get it up. You can start the, the, um, unless there's something you wanna?
Yeah, no problem. Thanks, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Regarding La Bonia Four, the department supports the proposed actions, which would facilitate the development of four one-hundred percent affordable eleven- and twelve-story mixed-use buildings totaling four hundred thirty-nine thousand square feet with approximately four hundred ninety-eight dwelling units on vacant, primarily city-owned land along La Bonia Avenue in Brownsville, Community District Sixteen, Brooklyn. The actions are consistent with community goals shared in the Brownsville Plan, which was the result of a collaborative planning process conducted by HPD. The Urban Development Action Area Designation, Project Approval, and Disposition of City-Owned Property would facilitate the conveyance of vacant, city-owned property to the developers of the project. The amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan would change the land use designation to allow for residential uses in a manner that is appropriate in the surrounding context and consistent with the underlying zoning. The department believes the proposed R seven-two, C two-four districts with MIH are appropriate. Both project sites are well-suited for additional density and in close proximity to subway stations. The proposed R seven-two district provides flexibility in the building envelope to encourage development that responds to the adjacent elevated rail. The department believes the community will benefit from the development of vacant land into nearly five hundred new units of affordable housing, including supportive and senior housing, as well as new community facility space and commercial space, including a supermarket. That concludes our recommendation. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Uh, do you know the status of the, um, negotiations between HPD and the adjacent homeowners, uh, regarding the encroachment issues on their respective, uh, parcels?
So, since, uh, our last, the last time I was presenting, I don't have any updates from HPD to, to share on that. I can give a refresher on where we're at last time I was here, uh, given the information from the letter from HPD, if that would be helpful.
Please.
Okay, so, um, basically after our, um, after the public hearing, HPD was in contact with the homeowners at Site C One. So, there are two homes that, but Site C One, that had not necessarily previously been in negotiations with HPD, but they had reached out to them and their legal teams were speaking about resolving the encroachment matters. And that was shared in the letter that should, I believe, have been in your package, uh, and I believe are in this package again, for, if you want further review on that. And then there are some, a couple others, um, that are touched on in that letter as well.
Okay, I haven't seen the recent, most recent letters. Um, uh, do you have any insight into what HPD's posture is? I mean, specifically, are they going to resolve this in a way that does not involve the expenditures on the part of these, these homeowners, longtime homeowners?
Yeah, so that, in, it, that, the letter covers it, um, and their, their intent is to be able to resolve the encroachment matters. They're trying as hard as possible to make sure no expenses are incurred by the homeowners.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Osorio, then Commissioner Goodrich?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks so much for the update and, and thanks so much for the report. I think that the report in general is very robust.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, as, as you heard from me before, you know, I think that this is a strong precedent of where we are building unrequired parking spaces, especially in a transit, um, a rich area. And so, having said that, I just wanted to commend you, 'cause I, I was very inspired with the first sentence of paragraph, paragraph two on page seventeen, where you say very clearly, "The commission notes its general disapproval of the parking, of, with the provision of parking in rich, dense areas." But then the next sentence is, "But we think that here is okay." And so, I'm wondering if there's, um, you know, discussed with the staff, the opportunity to maybe massage that second sentence so that we explain why we may think it is, although I, I don't agree with it respectfully, um, and especially sort of, I think, uh, communicate to HPD that, you know, I honor their, I wanna honor their response in terms of th, these parking spots being something that the community requested, but I think it's also our role as planners to explain the implications of this type of decision.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause we're granting fifteen parking, unrequired parking spaces in public land where we could be providing more affordable housing, more open space, et cetera. And so, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to maybe massage that second part of that paragraph to have a little bit more of a stronger language that, again, could guide future decisions like this one, 'cause this is gonna, not gonna be the, the last, the last time we see something like this.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner. Um, I've spoken with Alex as well on this, and we are planning to, um, to work, massage that language and, and make sure we incorporate some of what you're saying right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And who among us was not inspired by paragraph two on page seventeen?
(laughing)
Sentence one, I mean, let's be honest. All right, thank you very much. Other, other questions? Oh, Commissioner Goodrich, I'm sorry.
Uh, sure. I'm actually following up on Vice Chair Knuckles, um, questions about, um, so, from the information I have, some of the homeowners reached out to the commission.
Yeah.
Um, and from their perspective, there is no actual two-sided community conversation. It is just, you need, like, orders. And, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, this is, it, when it comes to a hundred percent affordable housing, I'm very much on board, um, but I am really concerned about it. And so, I guess my question really to you and just open is like, what exactly can we do to really ensure? Because other than, you know, approving it, and then with a condition, you know, what exactly is the accountability for HPD to not engage in the alleged behavior that the homeowners have, which I believe in quite frankly, that saying, which is just orders, like, this is what's gonna happen, and there's no actual conversation, negotiation?
Um, I think that's a, yeah, yeah.
And let me just be clear, it is specifically the Nehemiah Homeowner Association, among other people that reached out and said this. It is specifically the Nehemiah Homeowner Association, among other people that reached out and said this, so.
Yeah, well, I I think, to be perfectly honest, I'm maybe not the person to opine on this, but as far as, and 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 not necessarily, I don't know if there's a um a mechanism that city planning has to enforce that, just as we're sort of voting on the land or you all are voting on the land use actions versus the actual implementation of the project. So, uh, to be honest, I'm not sure if city planning has a way to enforce that. Um, if other Commissioners know of a mechanism there, um, please share, but.
I'll I'll just jump in to say that um I I think it's be- it's beyond the official for us. However, you know, it's a city agency that we're talking about, our sister city agency at H P D. Um, and they, you know, report to the mayor, and we obviously all have an interest in making sure that this is resolved in a way that is uh amicable and not not harmful to the people who are in the area. Um, so, you know, I I certainly think that, you know, expressing that view here is, this is an appropriate time to do that. It is, it's beyond the land use action, but it is also part of the political process. So that's what I, that's what I would say to you. And.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Did the homeowners go to the community board?
So I think there were a a couple forums um in which the sort of the homeowners expressed their feelings on the process. Uh, there was at the community board hearing, um, some homeowners, and and the community board is very aware of the the sentiment of the homeowners. I believe there are a couple homeowners on the community board. So they did express that, and it was reflected in the community board recommendations. But I believe Commissioner Goodrich, and correct if I'm wrong, there were some other channels through which community board members reached out, and then also including the public hearing, um, where a homeowner did testify on this. Other questions, comments? If I may add something um to your uh question, Commissioner Knuckles, or Vice Chairman Knuckles, um, and and for those who, Commissioners who may be joining us or the public who are tuning in, um, on the, in the review session on the nineteenth of September, I gave a slightly more in-depth run-through of the letter from H P D, and I encourage anyone who's interested to view that, it's on YouTube, um, for a slightly more in-depth discussion of that letter and where H P D was. Um, and that's public record for for all to see. Thank you, Juki. Commissioner Benjamin.
Has H P D chosen a developer yet?
Yes. Um, so I believe there's Radson, which is developing two of the properties, uh, Catholic Charities, uh, and one is um the Brownsville Partnership um in in conjunction with Community Solutions.
Is it possible to also communicate with them that we would like to see for the encroachment issue, that we would like to see that resolved in a positive way?
You know, I I will, I will pose this question over to Susan. The the question about the encroachment is one that I would expect the city would need to resolve itself separate apart from any developer chosen, because they they won't be able to turn over, uh, you know, the land which has, if it's disputed or if it's unresolved, but, you know. Do you want to jump in, Susan, on on that one?
Well, with the added issue that that was formerly city-owned land and was part of a Nehemiah project, and I'm not sure what the terms of the sales are, were in Nehemiah projects about if the city needs it in the future.
Right, and and we have not, you know, as part of our land use review, gone and looked at the underlying title documents or or agreements. So, yes, at some point, the title issue is going to need to be addressed, and title's gonna need to be, they need to quiet title. And so it's clear where the line is between what the city owns and what is not owned by the city. Um, precisely where that process happens is is probably unclear at this point, um, and could come up in a number of of different ways. And so, um, but in order for the, you know, the uh, each, the city to to enter into agreements with developers or for developers to move forward, they're going to have to be able to identify precisely what they own um and what they're entitled to build on.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay, thanks, Juki. We appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to the next one.
Uh, the Innovative Urban Village, this is the East New York Christian Cultural Center, and Alex Summer is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The department supports the proposed application, which will facilitate the redevelopment of a major underutilized site in East New York with over two thousand affordable apartments, including homes for seniors, commercial space, significant community amenities, public open space, and a new publicly accessible street network. The zoning map amendment to change an R five zoning district to an R seven-two, C two dash four zoning district will permit buildings that are consistent with the character of the neighborhood and will allow a broad range of residential, commercial, and community facility uses to support existing and future residents. The zoning tax amendment to establish M I H will ensure that hundreds of units are permanently affordable, and the amendment to expand the transit zone will support the use of available transit and promote walkability. The special permit to modify bulk regulations will promote a superior site plan, including preservation of the Christian Cultural Center, creation of new open space, and a well-considered building design. The special permit to allow a public parking garage will ensure visitors can easily access the existing and new community amenities. Therefore, the department recommends approval of the Innovative Urban Village application. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Alex. Commissioner Osorio.
Uh, thanks so much, Alex, and thanks so much to Ryan and the staff for addressing my questions throughout the process. And I just wanted to acknowledge uh that I'm grateful for you with with the the eh consideration to the suggestions that I expressed in terms of the report, where I am concerned that the language used to describe the eh extent to which the project is subject to floodplain projections eh needs to be revised. Specifically, we need to clarify that this project is going to be affected by the two, by the one uh percent floodplain in twenty eighty, and that will be progressively affected by the two percent floodplain in in starting basically right now. And and I and I want to sort of make sure that um we we state this, I mean, in the light of what we just saw happening in Florida. Nobody thought that a a a storm of that magnitude could happen, and we know the impact that that had. But in addition to that, I think that um invoking kind of like our our coastal board um a role, I think that we should also have a specific mention that this is within the W R P designated Jamaica Bay Special Special Natural Area. And therefore, we shouldn't just be urging them to consider stronger outpatient measurements, but actually requesting stronger commitments in terms of of projected flood impacts and I, as as we discussed throughout the process, not just within the project area, but in terms of adjacent public spaces. And and with this, you know, I just want to end by saying that um, in particular, I think that there's room for us to uh really kind of like underscore the need for green infrastructure specifically to absorb water in addition to the general urban design improvements that the report is urging uh the applicant to incorporate.
Thank you. We'll include that.
Thank you very much, Alex.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Alex.
Okay. Also, for consideration, um, in a in a few minutes here, uh, we have uh Santana Drive, uh, four thirty-seven Brighton Street, Gervail Street, Mason Boulevard, and Hemlock Street, and one oh four Mason Boulevard. Uh, these are certifications pursuant to the Su- Special South Richmond District. Staff believe that they have met the findings and are recommending approval. And if there are no questions on that, we we are done with the review session agenda.
Great, nothing else left for review session. Okay, don't go anywhere, everybody, because it is so good to see you all today. My name is Dan Garadnik, and welcome uh to uh the City Planning Commission's Special Public Meeting. Uh, and um I'm going to ask the calendar officer in a moment to uh introduce the meeting and to call the roll. But it's good you are all here. Thank you for sticking around. This one should be pretty quick. Madam Secretary.
Good afternoon. This is the City Planning Commission's Special Public Meeting, held remotely through the N Y C Engage portal and in person at the C P C Hearing Room, one twenty Broadway, Lower Manhattan. Today is Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. I will now call the roll. Chek Karadnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Bozark.
Here.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Doak is absent. Commissioner Gold is absent. Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Karmani.
Here.
Commissioner Marin is absent. Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Here.
Ekorm is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. With an abstention. Two abstentions from the new Commissioners. The minutes are approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers one through four. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, for a public hearing to be held in person in the C P C Hearing Room, uh, one twenty Broadway, and remotely through the N Y C Engage portal.
Great, thank you. Um, on the resolutions, I make a motion uh to approve uh the uh uh the resolutions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Resolutions are adopted.
The first item is the report section on page six. Borough of Brooklyn. Calendar numbers five and six, two eighty Bergen Street rezoning, C D two, calendar number five, C two-two-zero-one-eight-eight Z M K. Calendar number uh six, N two-two-zero-one-eight-nine Z R K. As a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning two eighty Bergen Street rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers five and six. Chek Karadnik.
I vote aye, thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
I'm abstaining from this in a number of them. I was out for a bit in their number of projects I didn't get a chance to deep dive on, and this is one of them, so I'm abstaining. Thank you.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, with the changes discussed with the staff.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers five and six. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers seven and eight, uh, fifteen seventy-one McDonald Avenue, C D twelve. Calendar number seven, C two-one-zero-two-three-zero Z M K. Calendar number eight, N two-one-zero-two-three-one Z R K. In the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning fifteen seventy-one McDonald Avenue, uh, for favorable reports on calendar numbers seven and eight, Chek Karadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Abstained.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers seven and eight. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Livonia Four, C D sixteen. Calendar number nine, C two-two-zero-four-two-seven H A K. Calendar number ten, C two-two-zero-four-two-eight H U K. Calendar number eleven, C two-two-zero-four-two-nine Z M K. Calendar number twelve, N two-two-zero-four-three-zero Z R K. In the matter of an application for U D A P designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property, and an amendment to an urban renewal plan, zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning Livonia Four, for favorable reports on calendar numbers nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Chek Karadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes, referencing our earlier discussion and with the hope that there's an amicable resolution around the encroachment issue raised by this project, I vote yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Echoing the sentiments of the Vice Chair, yes.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
So I just wanted to make a quick statement. Um, my vote is a barely yes, but, um, and I want to just briefly talk about why. Um, I I grew up in this area, and having a Nehemiah house was a big deal. A lot of people couldn't afford um their own private home, and so having this sort of um housing was the best way to attain homeownership. And so the two issues of one, encroachment, and then two, having to pay for, to remediate that, um, are in are incredibly burdensome to homeowners, and I don't think that any homeowner would think twenty years down the line that this would happen. So, um, from the information, at least that we've heard from H P D, and the information that we've heard, at least from some homeowners, I would hope that um there would be a resolution, and a resolution in a way that respects, that these are members of the community. So, um, my vote is yes with conditions that, of course, and echoing Vice Chair and and other Commissioners, that there be um an amicable and respectful communication between the parties. And there's all, it's already bad enough that there's encroachment, but at the very, this is really the minimum that H P D can do to make sure that there's not um anything coming out of the pockets of homeowners. So, yes.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, echoing the comments of Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Goodrich, and the comments about the parking.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Uh, I too, uh, echoing the statements from Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Goodrich, I vote yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Innovative Urban Village, um, C D five, calendar number thirteen, C two-two uh zero-three-one-two Z M K. Calendar number fourteen, N two-two-zero-three-one-three Z R K. Calendar number fifteen, C two-two-zero-three-one-four Z S K. Calendar number sixteen, C two-two-zero-three-one-one Z S K. As a matter of an application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments and special permits concerning Innovative Urban Village, for favorable reports on calendar numbers thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and favorable favorable report as modified on calendar number sixteen. Chek Karadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
I think this is a a transformational project, yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes, and I'll also echo the comments of the Vice Chair that I think this is a great project.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, provided the changes on uh projected inundation.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and favorable report as modified on calendar number sixteen. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, calendar number seventeen, C D three, N one-eight-zero-four uh six-seven R C R Santana Drive. Calendar number eighteen, C D three, N two-two-zero-three-five-zero R C R um four thirty-seven Brighton Street. Calendar number nineteen, C D three, N two-two-zero uh two-three-zero R C R uh Gervail Street, Mason Boulevard, and Hemlock Street. Calendar number twenty, C D three, N two-two-zero-four-zero-seven R C R one oh four Mason Boulevard. In the matter of applications for the grant of certifications concerning Santana Drive, four thirty-seven Brighton Street, uh, Gervail Street, Mason Boulevard, and Hemlock Street, and one oh four Mason Boulevard, uh, for adoption on calendar numbers seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Chek Karadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Um, this is the Santana Drive one? Uh, we're going to call um all the Staten Island uh certifications together. Oh, sorry. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Uh, Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Uh, calendar numbers seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty have been adopted.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Secretaries. Is there any other business before the commission today?